Okay, we'll now reconvene back from closed session. The time is 7:03. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. Just a little reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public, but are not a meeting of the public. And so with that, I also want to remind everybody that we have some students and guests here, so let's maintain the proper decorum. Respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior or and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, we're going to go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance. And I want to introduce tonight, presenting our colors. If you would all please stand. We'll have the Kingwood Park Air Force ROTC.
Ours, ours. Peace and others.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored protects this flag. With allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ours, ours. Ours and ours. Ours and ours.
We'd ask if you please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Once again, I want to thank the Kingwood Park Air Force ROTC. And also, if there's any veterans in the house tonight, we want to thank you for your service to our country. We really do appreciate it. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move over into some accommodations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. Good chilly evening to everybody. We're going to start tonight with our inspiring moments. Movement correlates to strong learning. Tonight, our inspiring moments video looks inside the classroom to see neuroscience-based strategies engaging UMBLE ISD students.
Yellow, purple. Watch out for the black and the yellow.
Action-based learning benefits all children. We talk about teaching the whole child. And it's about getting every child into balance mentally, physically, socially, emotionally.
As we know, if we move more, we stimulate the growth of neurons in our brain. And not only that, if we move more and move appropriately, meaning with high-quality movements, you not only create more brain cells, but you improve the connection between the brain cells. And that allows the neurons to communicate with each other. That's highly involved in learning information and retrieving information. When it comes to our students, it's vital that they move regularly because we know that with appropriate amounts of movement and appropriate quality of movement, it stimulates the brain's growth.
It's kind of like over there, like after like sitting quietly. So that's me standing quietly for five minutes or 20. And that after that for a 20-minute right there where all the lights are, after a 20-minute walk, that's when your brain starts going and you're like, I'm ready to go.
Kids need that movement in order for them to have their learning. And so for teachers to be able to bring their kids in here, see their kids engaged, happy, healthy. And it's that full approach to being able to help kids grow and learn the most effective way.
When I first came to UMBLE ISD, we did have, we had a training for Brain Gym. And the different ways to use the equipment was shown.
You're supposed to actually do that softly and slowly. And make sure your feet touch the end of this, like the first of that, and then beat that.
So yeah, the trainings are definitely offered, but then you have to take that next step after the trainings of taking that risk. And it might not be great at first, but it's something, it's just like the classroom. You just keep tweaking it till it gets to your expectations and the kid's expectations and until they're thriving and enjoying it.
And that's what I'm doing. And I spelled the word because, B-E-C-A-U-S-E.
They've come home saying that they love it. My second grader, he says, Mom, I only got to go twice. So he loves it. And he is hoping that he can do it a lot more.
What I really envision and dream for is a chance for kids to have a regular opportunity to move and play and have structured play and be able to come into our action-based learning lab and utilize it. I'd like to see this lab full every 20 minutes, all day, every day.
And look over there, right there. Uh-oh. This is where your brain starts thinking and stuff.
In all of our action-based learning labs, we have posters. And those posters help us depict that aha moment when the light goes on. And what that is, is it's synapses firing in the brain that help us to make cognitive connections.
And what I feel about it, it kind of makes me like, like, like happy and enjoy it.
Action-based learning is also being used at our secondary campuses. It looks a little different, but what we see is a lot of flexible seating options for our students and purposeful movement that's being integrated throughout the lesson standard.
So this is the second year I've done flex seating. The benefits are definitely that my kids can focus, they're a lot more attentive. I have way less discipline issues. I have better quality of work. I have higher passing rates. I have a lot more collaboration, a lot more kids helping each other than ever before. They love the fact that they can sit where they want, how they want, when they want.
It makes me focus more because if I just look at the board, it makes me tired and want to go to sleep.
And with the desk, I'm in a box, like I can't move. But with the ball, I can like move around and function.
Sometimes when teachers decide for you where you sit, you, they surround you by the wrong type of people. And they start talking or they start making noises and you can't really concentrate around that. I like to sit where people don't really talk a lot and stuff like that. So I can actually focus and get my work done.
It is a lot to manage because you do have to manage, they want, of course, my basketball players love to bounce the balls. My soccer players love to kick the balls. So you've got to kind of fight that a little bit. But they're actually usually very respectful about using the chairs because they want them.
The data we've collected is encouraging. Our campuses that have adopted the whole-child approach to learning are seeing a significant decrease in discipline referrals. That means significantly fewer disruptions in the classroom and significantly more time spent learning. We have seen a steady growth of action-based learning labs opening throughout our district. UMBLE ISD hosted the Greater Houston Area Kinesthetic Collaborative this past October. And there were over 150 educational leaders from our region. At the end of the day, the purpose for focusing on the whole child is to give each student every opportunity to pursue their personal best, mentally, physically, socially, and emotionally.
This place is awesome. I don't know why, it's just awesome. It makes me learn.
I'd like to recognize some of the stars of tonight's video who are here in the audience with us. Jack Wardlow, student. Jack, are you there? There he is. Danica Hernandez, student. Yay. Hannah Salerno, teacher, Elm Grove. Dr. Bruce Gilery, chiropractor. Amanda Christian, teacher, UMBLE High School. And Helen Wagner, coordinator of health and physical education from UMBLE ISD. Congratulations to all of you. Great job. They're going to bring you guys stuff. The brains. Oh, thank you. Oh, wow, those are cool. That's really an incredible video and you all did a great job telling the story. We've learned so much in education about how movement impacts not only engagement, but long-term retention. So thank you so much for sharing that with everyone. Next, Saturday, November 3rd, was a great morning in our community when about 800 of us turned out for the Greater Lake Houston Area Heart Walk. Staff, students, and families enjoyed walking in beautiful weather on the Lone Star College Kingwood Campus. Last year, our community did not have a Heart Walk due to Hurricane Harvey. So it was especially meaningful to be back at the restored campus this year. I am very proud to share that UMBLE ISD teams raised more than $29,700 to benefit the American Heart Association through this event. The American Heart Association is here tonight to present awards to our top participating campuses and to the top fundraising campuses. I believe. Okay, all right, welcome. Please, please step on up.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay? I have allergies from the Heart Walk. No, just kidding. My name is Samantha Fuehl Nunez with Vice President of Youth Market for the American Heart Association. I just want to thank you guys so much for allowing us the time to honor and recognize UMBLE ISD. The Heart Walk was a really huge success and due to the efforts to all of UMBLE ISD. And we honestly cannot thank you enough for all that you do to support our mission. And we can't do what we do without districts like you. In fact, I have a very big announcement for UMBLE ISD. For the fifth year, UMBLE ISD is the champion school district for Heart Walk in the entire state of Texas. This incredibly generous community raised more money than any other district in all of Texas. So really, thank you so much. Congratulations, UMBLE ISD, for being the best, which you're not surprised, I'm sure. Everyone really did an incredible job. And I would really like to take a moment to recognize some schools and sites who especially hit it out of the park this year. So I would like to recognize the top participating Heart Walk teams first. Can we get high school, the top high school participating team, Kingwood Park High School? Should I, the next one's also, okay. Our top participating middle school was Kingwood Middle School. Top elementary school was Foster Elementary. And top participating specialty team was the Community Learning Center. And we have certificates for each one of you. Now, I would also like to recognize the top fundraising teams. So let our friends sit here real quick. Okay, so our first one, the top fundraising team for the high school was Atascacita High School. Our top fundraising middle school was Kingwood Middle. Top elementary was Summerwood Elementary. Our top specialty campus was the Community Learning Center. And a big congratulations to the overall top fundraising team for all of UMBLE ISD, which was Atascacita High School. Thank you and congratulations again to all. You should be very, very proud.
Okay. Avid National Demonstration Schools are held up as exemplary models that educators visit to learn from the best. Every three years, Avid National Demonstration Schools must undergo a process to be revalidated to retain that honor. Dr. Charles Ned, Director of Advanced Academics, has an announcement from UMBLE ISD tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Good evening to all. I'm proud to announce that UMBLE Middle School has been revalidated as an Avid National Demonstration School through 2022 as of this year. So again, congratulations, UMBLE Middle School. UMBLE Middle's in the house. Just to kind of give you some insight into this, there are 6,000 Avid schools nationwide. Less than 2% are national demonstration schools. So what that means to be a national demonstration school is that other schools from around the country, other educators from around the country will come to UMBLE Middle to learn about the practices of Avid. UMBLE Middle School has exemplified this. They do it better than anyone else. And the Avid Validation Team, they were extremely complimentary of UMBLE Middle in the practices that they have in place. Obviously, it goes without saying that there is a culture at UMBLE Middle, that student center, it's leadership-driven, and there are college readiness structures that's in place school-wide. The efforts of the students, teachers, staff, and administrative team were beyond impressive. And the many accolades showered upon them by the Avid National Validation Team were well-deserved. In the past, I know that we've had, we have three national demonstration schools. And in the past, we've had board members that have come out. Our superintendent has come out to support this event. Our assistant superintendents have come out as well to support campuses during the validation or revalidation process. I want to thank Ms. Hayhurst because she has never missed a single validation or revalidation visit by Avid. So I want to thank her for her support. Also, I'd like to thank someone that is very instrumental with our Avid program as a whole. She's recently moved on to take a position with the Avid organization, but she's still here to support us with that continued support, Ms. Sally Wagner. And I'd like to congratulate the leader of UMBLE Middle School, Ms. Seradia Johnson, and her amazing team in establishing a campus culture that embodies all that Avid represents and practices that enable students to make their best better each and every single day. Ms. Johnson, with you and your team, please come forward.
Ready? We're going to look at this, this big camera, it's a big camera.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right, now the little one. One, three, again, one, no. There we go. There we go. And get that gap right, perfect. All right. All right, staring like, one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and...
Okay, now I'd like to invite Jerry Monbaron to present the this month's superstaffers.
UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students. And we want to recognize these employees for their important work in making Team UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. The sponsor for this month's superstaffer awards is Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union. And joining us tonight from the credit union is Julia Arsna. Julia, come on up. Thank you for sponsoring. So being honored as the elementary superstaffer tonight is Fatin Baba from Lakeland Elementary. Joining Ms. Baba is Lucy Anderson, the principal. And let me tell you a little bit about her. She serves as a paraeducator in the developmental class at Lakeland. In her role, she works with 10 students, all of whom have unique qualities. Fatin is calm, organized, and patient with her students. She does not let them give up and pushes them to reach beyond their grasp. Ms. Baba expects and receives the best from her students each and every day. She's a shining example that one person can and will make a difference in the lives of children. Congratulations. Being honored as the secondary superstaffer tonight is Andrea Clerkski from Quest Early College High School. Joining Andrea is Terry Osborne, the principal. And let me tell you a little bit about Andrea. She's an irreplaceable member of the Quest staff. She exemplifies service and kindness to every individual she encounters. There is no problem that is too big or need that is too small. She's always ready to serve and seeking opportunities to be good to people. She takes tremendous pride in being a team player and she cares for every student as though they are her own. It is a privilege to have such an impactful person on the Quest team, knowing no one is more deserving of the superstaffer honor than Andrea. Being honored as the support superstaffer is Jennifer Woodall. Jennifer is the Curriculum Instruction Secondary ELA Specialist. And joining her front is Director of Curriculum Instruction Stephanie Perry. So Jennifer consistently finds new approaches to develop innovative ELA practices for UMBLE ISD. She looks for ways to make classroom instruction engaging and empowering to help aid in student success and build a lifelong love of literacy. Jennifer's knowledge of content and process across the K-12 range is amazing. And she's consistently able to do her part on the team and provide insight to best practices for children. She has an amazing, caring heart and uses that as a guide in all of her work. Congratulations, Jennifer.
That concludes our accommodations and recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll move into our next agenda item, and that's going to be comments, questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. And we just want everyone to know that the board encourages comments from the citizens of the district or from district employees, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedures outlined in the agenda. The board asks that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. At the four-minute mark, the parliamentarian will ring a bell. Let them hear it one time. Oh, yeah, we've got to get it right. That'd be your, your one minute left out of your five. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned that is listed on the agendas, the board will defer its discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. First up, we will have Ms. Cynthia Putnam. Is she here? Cynthia? Thank you. If you will approach supporting.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Putnam, and I am the mom of a first grader and a third grader at Fall Creek Elementary. I am here tonight to talk to you about overcrowding at Fall Creek Elementary and the issues that result from that. I hope that after tonight that you make us a priority and help us solve these issues. What the overcrowding does, it really affects our quality of education and it gives us some safety issues that I'll talk to you about. What I want you to do is I want you to move up the building of Elementary School 30. Elementary School 30 is the second elementary school to be built in Fall Creek. And it's going to help alleviate all of our overcrowding. It was scheduled to be built in 2021. And from my understanding, it's been pushed back to 2022. So let me tell you a little bit about Fall Creek. It opened in August of 2008, and it was built to hold about 750 students. Currently, we have 1,071 students at our school. We have eight portables that house 16 classrooms. That consists of all of our fourth and fifth graders in those portables. We have more portables than any other elementary school in the district does. We're expected to get another portable next year, which is going to bump that number of kids that are up outside of the confines of our school building to about 400 kids. To put that kind of in perspective for you, there are multiple elementary schools in our school district that didn't have enrollment over but about 500 total kids last year. And we're going to have 400 sitting outside of our building. I think that the overcrowded issues, it results in three different main issues for me. First and foremost, it's loss of instruction time for our kids. And then third, it really does decrease the level of safety for a lot of our students, specifically the students that are gonna be in the mobiles or in the portables. So let's talk about the loss of instructional time. First and foremost, let's think about how congested a school is that has almost 1,100 students, that's built for 750 people. Wait times on bathrooms, crowdedness in the halls. Anytime those kids are passing each other, and there's too many of them there, then it's gonna take a little bit of a time for a teacher to get them back in order and get them where they need to go. Every second is gonna add up to a minute. It's gonna add up to a lot of time that they're losing every week and every month for instruction. For the kids that are in the portables, they, at this point, have to walk out of their portables, and there's one path straight into the school for them. So all 350 of those kids, when they come in for a performing arts or a special program or the cafeteria, you're getting all 350 kids in a timely manner and through two doors and one path. That all results in time that's lost in instruction. The other big thing that I would talk to you about is class size. I know that we do not have to follow the Texas Education Code of 22 to 1 for class size, but I will tell you that the majority of our first through third grades are at that limit. Our fourth grade, five out of our eight classes, have 24 kids in them. I understand that when it's 24 to 1 ratio, y'all do try to pay attention and make sure that everything's going, but five out of our eight classes are maxed right now. So we are capping all of our class sizes to give good quality education and time to these students. What happens when you have that many kids? You have way more opportunities for distractions, behavioral problems, talking, kids leaving school early or are coming in late. Every time something like this happens, a teacher has to then take time out of her instruction to stop it and put it back together. Whether it's a kindergartner or a fifth grader, it's all very, very distracting, and there's more seconds for you adding up on this loss of instruction time. The other thing that I would really talk to you about is we, our kids really have limited access to specials and cultural arts programs. Our kids get PE once every three days. That's because they're required to have a certain amount of time in PE. Other than that, they get specials once every eight days, which is basically once every two weeks, they get to see a librarian or an art teacher. So I'm gonna go on a little bit more about the safety. Let's see, oh, well, really quickly. Our cultural arts are also very limited for our students because we only have a two-hour window from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM to present special programs to them, because it's done in the cafeteria, and our kids start lunch at 10:15 every single day and don't end until 1:45. So what happens is, because they can't all fit in the cafeteria at once, we have two programs for them. If we get any bigger, we're gonna have to go to one additional day of programs, which is an additional distraction, it's additional money. This year also, for Bistown, for example, we are, we had to do it two days, so we're paying two times for two days' worth of buses, because they can't accommodate how many fifth graders we have. I do wanna skip ahead and talk to you about safety before my time runs out. We have a lot of parking issues, which is a huge safety concern for me.
Time.
Is it time? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I also think that the mobiles are very unsafe for active shooters. Okay, thank you. I think our parking is super, is a super big issue. We have so many kids that get dropped off in the middle of the street in front of our school, or get dropped off at intersections farther away, because their parents don't wanna wait in those lines and they're late for school. We have a lot of walkers, a lot of bike riders, and a lot of cars, and it's very overwhelming in the mornings and in the afternoons. I would end on something that I worry about probably more than the average person. I used to be a prosecutor. So I've always, if you've ever had active shooter training, you know the mantra is run, hide, it's run, hide, fight. If you can't run, you need to hide. If you can't hide, you need to fight, because otherwise you know what the outcome is. I really think that's important for these kids with, in these portables. We did build gates and security cameras this year, but gates aren't gonna keep somebody who wants to hurt our kids out. And I think that 350 or 400 kids in portables, they don't have anywhere to run, and they don't have anywhere to hide. They are stuck in those buildings that aren't bulletproof. Logistically, I don't know how most schools are, but our mobiles or our portables are in the back of our school. Our administrative office is in the front, and so those security cameras that see that intruder, they're being seen by somebody who is a good 60 to 90 seconds away from that intruder. And so I don't wanna talk about that realistically, like what's, what happens there? Does that administrative assistant then go and try to confront it? That intruder? Well, they've already given him 60 seconds to do whatever they wanna do, or 90 seconds. So then what do they do? Does the administrative assistant not do that, but find somebody who's more relevant and more trained to do that? We don't have a school resource officer, so who is that person that's trained to confront and stop or try to stop that intruder on our school that's gonna hurt those 350 students? So then it goes too well, they call 911, well, great, you're still giving it three, five minutes response time. And that's a lot of time when something bad like that happens on a campus. And I really think the only way to fix that issue is to be able to put them in the concrete building with the rest of the kids that have locked doors and have specific places for people to get in and get out, and those are the only ways that it can happen. Thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me go over.
Thank you, Ms. Putnam. Thank you, Martina. Needed to hear that. Next up, we'll have Tricia, and I might butcher this, Krebs? Okay, I'm lucky now. Thank you, Dr. Fagan.
If I could make a couple of comments before I start my five-minute speech. Sitting in my first board meeting, I would just like to say it's an honor to be a parent in this school district. After seeing all these awards that the district has gotten, it's really, makes me feel good as a parent. So thank you, board, for doing what you do every day. Good evening tonight. My name is Tricia Krebs, and I am a parent. I'm here to talk to the board regarding Wood Creek Middle School. I wanna ask the board for two things. One, to give additional staff and support to Wood Creek Middle School, and two, to prioritize Middle School Number 10 to be built as planned in August 2020. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I have lived in UMBLE for 15 years. My husband and I moved here. We have two kids that went through Fall Creek Elementary. When they were there, I was very involved in the school. On the PTO these last two years, I was the PTO president in Fall Creek Elementary. Now, both of my boys are at Wood Creek Middle School. I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. Now, I'm gonna be honest, when my eighth grader started in sixth grade, two years ago, I was a nervous parent. But I was pleasantly surprised when my son entered that school, how organized and how efficient that school ran. I was proud to send my kid to Wood Creek Middle School. I was proud of the leadership. They handled issues, of course, it's a middle school, you're gonna have fights, you're gonna have discipline, but it was taken care of quickly, efficiently, and consistently. Many of these people in this room know Mr. McDonald. He has moved on to the high schools, many know. But he has a special gift to not only work with the students and get to know them and motivate them, not only to manage the teachers and empower them to do the best that they can, but most importantly, he works good with the parents. And he probably manages us better, which is probably the most challenging group of all of us. Now, he has moved on to the high school and doing great things at Summer Creek, which I am excited about. But since his departure, Wood Creek Middle School has not done well. At the end of the school year last year, we left, lost over 50 teachers and staff, that is over half of our staff. Lost a lot of 10-year veterans, leaders. Now, with the opening of Westlake Middle School, we only had to lose 10 with the amount of students that we lost. In addition to this, we also had implemented this year a team teaching or house structure at Wood Creek Middle School. In my opinion, I think we rushed to implement that and caused a lot of the issues that we had at the start of the school year. Thirdly, we had an over-expected enrollment for 2018-2019 school year. The combination of these three things left our students with several concerns to start the year. We had some classes with no permanent teachers. We had classrooms with up to 38 students, many sitting on the floor with lap boards to do their schoolwork. We have some students that didn't even have a schedule on day one. It took us three to four weeks to us to address these problems and give a schedule to students. This is not our seventh and eighth graders that are used to middle school, these are our sixth graders, our babies. They need to have structure, they're nervous enough getting into middle school. So I ask you to provide additional staff, even though we are not at the proper numbers for Wood Creek Middle School, to add an additional assistant principal, to help us give those eyes, those ears. We've had three principals in the last three years. It has been rough. It has been trying for the students and for the teachers. Our current enrollment is 1,536. We are built for a capacity of 1,100. I also ask for an additional counselor to help. Now, we have had, myself, I've met with Ms. Hay Hirsch last summer, there's a group of parents that have met with Dr. Brown regarding the schools and when they are supposed to be built, and we've also had a group that met with Ms. Scott, our interim principal. She has some really great programs planned for Wood Creek, and I really think that she is gonna do an awesome job, but she needs help, and so I ask you to give her that help. Secondly, I ask you to put a priority to build Middle School Number 10 that will relieve Wood Creek. As I said, our capacity is at 1,100, and we are currently at 1,536. Our projected enrollment for 2020, according to the last assessment, is 2,120. As Ms. Putnam explained, the middle school has 14 portables. We have 13 classroom portables and one portable used for restrooms. When we do the math, if we assume 25 kids per portable, that's 26 classrooms, we have 650 kids outside in portables every day. This is, again, more than a normal elementary school in UMBLE ISD. I encourage the board to prioritize the building to be built as promised in August of 2020. Through our meetings for the various parents with Dr. Brown, we have found that that's currently scheduled for 2021. I'm asking just to do what you've promised to do and start that school in 2020, because we need the help. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you'll take our consideration seriously. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ms. Jennifer Grillo.
Before I begin, you should have a copy of this material in front of you, and on the inside is a map. And a quick shout-out, the UMBLE ISD is noted at the bottom, the acclaimed UMBLE ISD school. I'm ready to begin. My name's Jennifer Grillo, and I am the Vice President of Fall Creek Homeowners Association, and I'm here to talk to the board, as well of all of you, about two things. One is the property that the school district bought within Fall Creek community for a second school. And the second item to be discussed is how the overcrowding for Fall Creek Elementary is impacting Fall Creek community as a whole. Couple of years ago, the school district bought some property within Fall Creek Elementary. We already had an elementary school at that time, and the HOA was not informed or consulted or even asked to give any kind of insight or opinion regarding the purchase of that property. I have to say, a couple of the members, including myself, our noses kinda got a little bent out of shape, but it was explained to us the reasoning why that we didn't understand, and now that y'all explained it to us, it makes sense. However, I want to reiterate the importance of communication on this property going forward with the HOA and the school district. There are some interesting things about our community. Even though we were developed about 18 years ago, we have not finished construction yet on our homes. And this December, I'm pleased to say that we will finish construction, and at the end we'll have 2,800 homes, and the population is between seven to eight or even more thousand people. I can get you the exact details, but if you wanna do 2,800 by 2.5 people per household, that's 7,000. So we reached out to the school district, and Dr. Brown was kind enough to meet with us, and we wanted to find out at that time about the proposed bond that was being set for a vote. And Dr. Brown was kind enough to meet with us, and he talked to us about the particulars of the bond, including where the property existed in the, how that bond was gonna affect our community and the property that was bought. We wanted to know specifically, what was the intention of the school district? What was the timing of the proposals? And at that time, before the bond went for a vote, it was explained to us that it was gonna be between Fall Creek and another elementary. We express that our community has a backstory, and that's the whole point of the communications in these meetings. And we would attend more meetings, I feel like I'm reaching here, we would attend more meetings, but unfortunately, your meeting time and date is the same as our HOA board. But the whole point of the meetings that y'all have is where, well, is our board, and I wish we had as many people come, this is fascinating. But, but the whole point is to find out from people, what are the unintended consequences? What are the backstory? What is the information that these people may have that you don't have that's apparent in studies and statistics? And our community is unique in that we are rather large, but two, it wasn't all the same part of the master plan. We bought some property that was through foreclosure. And so because of it, they don't have the amenities, because it wasn't part of the master plan. Also, two, the lot sizes are smaller, and there is a feeling, and you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, there is a feeling on some of the people that live on the east side that there's like an east-west side story, that the west has all the amenities, the east does not. The property that y'all have purchased is on the east side. And if you are considering doing an elementary school, we hope that you consider doing a split campus. Kindergarten through second at the Fall Creek Elementary, where it is now, and then on the other campus, do third, fourth, and fifth. What you're doing is you're still separating the population, you're splitting it in half, but you're doing it by grade and not address. You're keeping the community as a whole, and I don't think y'all want to do anything that splits and divides the community, because if you do that, it's gonna affect the school district. Real quick, I know I only have less than a minute, I wanna talk about Fall Creek and the overcrowding we have. If you look on the map, you will see in the highlighted portion, those sections of our neighborhood that have to go through that intersection. And if you, it's right next to Fall Creek Elementary. I don't know if you can see that or not. So in order for all these sections to get to work, they have to go through that intersection. For the rest of Fall Creek to take their kids to the elementary school, they have to go through that intersection. We have been blessed that we have had some of the best principals, Ms. Arola, who's sitting right there, Ms. Stroud, Ms. Urb, great call on her, wonderful hire, she's brand new this year, and we really love her. It's important that the communication going forward is continued with the school district and the HOA. Whatever we can do, whatever information you need from us, we can get that for you. You know, I always believe that communication is key, and no matter what, and we have reached out to you and with that meeting with Dr. Brown, and we hope that whatever decisions you make, you allow us to be part of that decision-making process. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker's gonna be Mr. Robert Scarfall.
The rock can't see you guys. I just wanted to come to talk about the finance reports that you're gonna talk about tonight. And, you know, given all that we've been hearing in the news lately about really serious financial issues of, I won't mention, but nearby districts, I said I wouldn't mention it, but anyway, that's one, but in any event, I think it's really gratifying to see, year after year, what our district does in the financial arena in terms of how we conduct ourselves, and, and I just think it's great. Particularly, in my professional life, I spent a lot of time poring over financial statements of clients and prospects, and it always warms my heart when I read audit reports that say things like, you know, "The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, and there's no findings that need to be pointed out," or, "Or that the district's complied in all material respects with the type of compliance requirements that are referred to," and all the rest of the legalese and the counteys that goes on. And that's important, and I was reading those from our audit reports, just so you know. I mean, it's, that's really great to see. And you all- And you all are to be complimented for your role in both governance and oversight, and Mr. Seale, Ms. Fashon, you and your staffs as well, and really, everybody in this district, because it's not really something that happens just because one group is doing something. But your leadership and all the efforts that you guys have shown. I mean, you know, they achieve really these bedrock results, year after year after year. I mean, it's gone for a couple of decades. You get those certificates. And I think sometimes, you know, many in the community, maybe besides finance nerds like me and a couple of you guys, may like, ah, okay. It is, it's a huge deal, and people really, really, really ought to take note of it, because that's the kind of stuff that, because you guys are doing what you're doing, it allows us to finance the things we need to do, because without the finances, everything grinds to a halt. And especially some of the things that were brought out tonight, those are real issues, real concerns, but if you're weak financially, you're not going to have a chance to address those. So hats off to all of you folks who are continuing to do the work that you do and to keep us a financially strong, sound, insolvent district. I mean that. So thank you.[683.23][683.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Robert. Chair, I guess we do not have any more speakers, so we will move on to the next item of business, and that is comments by individual board members. And I will start to my left, your right, Ms. Dixon. Lamond Dixon.
Oh, first, I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans, and congratulations to Umbel Middle School for being a national demonstration school for Avid. And last, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's all.
All right. Ms. Conrad.
Well, I thought I had some things to add, but it's not loading. I just wanted to... I really love the Action-Based Learning Lab, so thank you for bringing that out and showing us what a difference that's making for kids. I think it's all intuitive, but to really focus on that and make it okay for them to include play in learning, that's awesome. Really, all I want to do is just remind everyone, after the elections, you know, we have the legislative session coming up, and so if you're so inclined, you can go to the Texas Capitol site, TLO, Texas Legislature Online, and you can actually set up alerts. I know they're starting to file the bills now, and that can be like really hard to keep up with once the session starts. So getting those alerts is helpful to kind of keep an eye on those things that you're most concerned about and to follow up with your elected officials. Let them know how to...
You keep their promises.
Exactly. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. I'll go down here to the end. Mr. Carney.
I also want to express congratulations to Umbel Middle as well on the Avid designation. That's awesome. Also wanted to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope everyone enjoys the entire next week off, and my kids will love it, so looking forward to that. That's all I've got.
Mr. Lopez.
Ditto. Happy Veterans Day, Mr. Cunningham, and wanted to thank the speakers tonight, especially my neighbors in Fall Creek. I appreciate it. I wish we had this on the agenda tonight, we could talk about it, but unfortunately, we can't. But I'd like to follow up with you guys and let you know what's happening, and we can talk about it, because a lot of the things that you said tonight are things that already been discussed, a lot, a lot. Next, Umbel Middle, the Avid program. It's incredible, and it's a testament to the leadership and the folks there that do so much hard work to really, you know, show that, you know, we're really an awesome district. So just congratulations to them, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Sitten.
Is Sally Wagner still here?
She left.
Yeah, we're going to miss her. She really embraced the Avid program. Not only is Umbel Middle School a demonstration campus, but as mentioned tonight, we have three, and she was very instrumental in doing that so well that Avid has taken her away from us to help spread their message around the country. So we're going to miss her, and congratulate... congratulations, Umbel Middle School and our other schools. Also, congratulations, and I know they left as well, but Kingwood Park Girls Volleyball won the region championship this past weekend, so they'll be playing in the Final Four volleyball championships this weekend. Also, Tascata High School, Kingwood High School, Kingwood Park High School, and Summer Creek High School all are in the state football playoffs. So good luck to everybody, and hopefully the weather will cooperate.
Thank you. Ms. Sitten. Ms. Morrison.
Well, I just want to ditto everything that everybody said about the congratulations to our Avid campuses. Also, a huge thank you to the parents of the Fall Creek area. I have a real softie for you, since I worked out there, and so I do appreciate you coming and speaking, and I ditto what Mr. Lopez said, so... And I hope everybody has a very safe and enjoyable and restful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, and I'll just diddle everything that everybody said, but I want to at least say that I enjoyed myself kind of on Friday. It was a little cold.[988.43][988.43](LAUGHING). But we had the Education Foundation golf tournament, and I think it was a success. Even those that didn't show up, and those that did show up, they left, but they left their money, and that's all we want. But with that said, I want to wish everybody, as we get ready to go into this first turn of the holidays, Happy Thanksgiving. And with that, I'm going to kick it over to the superintendent, Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say congratulations to everyone who participated in the Heart Walk to be the number-one school district in the state. Works for us. We're a little competitive, so... And it takes a huge number of people to do that and collect those dollars, show up and walk, and all of it, and the mascots were there, and it was a lot of fun. So congratulations to everybody on that. Thanks to the folks from Fall Creek who came tonight. We are right in the throes of sequencing bonds and looking at tax rates and all of those kinds of things, and we know it's not as fast as people would like, and believe it or not, every single group in the bond wants their thing right now. And so we're really trying to figure out how to work on that, and Mr. Lopez's comment is absolutely right. Dr. Brown has done a great job of bringing forward information about the concepts of primary versus intermediate, the conversations that need to be had in the community about that idea of a pre-K and early childhood sort of center, and that way, then the students go on to an intermediate building versus having two full elementary schools in the community, which we know was, and is, for some, was not as exciting, but we think that that is worthy of a conversation. As you know, we're just finishing Middle School 9, which is the current prototype for middle schools, and when you finish a prototype, it's incumbent on us to be responsible, to review the benefits of that prototype, as well as the things that we would make better for next time, and so we are right on the toes of that process also. So as we close the building of one building, then we can start contemplating particular plan changes for the next. And so all of these conversations are absolutely being had and actually taking a great deal of our attention and time right now, as we are closing the books on $100 million of Harvey work and opening the books on $575 million of new bond work and finishing the remainder of the 2008 bond. So it's just, it's a lot, and we want to make sure that we move all of that forward in a very extremely reasonable and appropriate way for all of our students. We want to make sure every single child has a great learning opportunity, whether you're at Lakeland Elementary or Tascata Springs or Fall Creek Elementary, wherever you are, we want to make sure that all of our students have those experiences. And so we have some work to do to finish out the sequencing. The bond selling is about $125 million a year, so we don't just get a check for that $575, which would be really great, but we don't, and so we have to really sequence our projects in a way that maximizes those sales as they come in. And we will absolutely make sure that the communication is strong on all of these topics as we move forward. So I wanted to make sure that you all didn't come and talk, and we didn't give you a little bit of something back, and I can do that, because I don't vote. I'm not on the board. And so I'm able to speak about that item in particular. And let's see, I think that... Oh, and by the way, I just want you to all know that I got some text messages today about if we're going to have a snow day, because there was like one flurry in the air.[1189.01][1189.01](LAUGHING). And I know that our principals handled that well, because there were a lot of students who were excited about the idea, and given the rarity of snow in Houston, I know that we have some principals that said, okay, yeah, let's go out and see that one snowflake if that's what you want to do. But nonetheless, thank you for not having me a call of snow day. I think I would have lost my Iowa card-carrying license for doing so. But anyway, I do hope everyone has a great holiday. Very proud of the philanthropy in this district, whether it's the Heart Walk or anything else, the golf tournament. The giving is alive and well. This community takes care of its students, and that's why it's the very best place for students, and it's also one of the reasons why we're one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state of Texas. Also something to remember, that when you grow by about 1,000 students, they don't come in neat packages, and that's about an elementary school a year. So we're managing all of that together, and thank you for the positive comments about the finances, because you're absolutely right. Our ability to come through a hurricane and pass a bond and move into building and finish buildings and all of that stuff is because of the fiscal stewardship of this board and many finance folks who work here every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. And we'll move into our... I believe we have... What is next here? Yeah, Board Association of Committees, and first up is Audit Committee. And I will report briefly on the Audit Committee. We met with the external auditors over our CAFER, that's that Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We were very pleased, the Audit Committee was, and I believe I'm going to let Mr. Sitten talk a little bit more on that, but with that, that's all I have to report. We'll move on into Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee. Mr. Lopez.
We really don't have a report. We had a team-building session. Was it last Saturday?
Last Saturday, yes.
Last Saturday.
Last Saturday.
Got our steps in.
Yeah, we got, yes, we got our steps in. We... I think we're supposed to do another one, though, right?
Yes.
Mid-year.
A mid-year. So we'll schedule that one before long, but that's all we have.
Okay. We'll move into the Building and Planning Committee. Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Well, I just wanted to share some good news. The documents have been signed for the land for the Ag Barn and Transportation Facility, and if all goes well, closing should be on Thursday. And that's all I have at this moment.
Okay, good. Finance Committee, our Chair, Mr. Robert Sitten.
Yes, we, as you'll know, we're going to have a report on the CAFER tonight. It's already been talked about a little bit. Just had a chance to briefly look through it. It's a really good report from a finance standpoint, so I'm anxious to hear from them. Our next meeting will be December 3rd. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some type of an update on the FEMA money that is still with the state of Texas at this point. So just to remind you, there were a lot of reports out. I talked about this last month, a lot of reports out about the $45 million or $54 million that was already sent to Umbel ISD. Well, Umbel ISD has not received that money. It is with the state. It's earmarked for us, but we still have not received that money. So still working through those things, and again, hats off to Mike Seale and his team. The fact that we were able to rebuild Kingwood High School, we were able to continue with all the construction projects that were in process without cutting any jobs, without cutting any programs, without cutting anything that we do as a school district and moving forward, without having to wait, like some school districts, for reimburseals before we could move forward. So, Mike, thank you and your team for what you do there, and Dr. Fagan for your leadership in that space. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Advocacy Committee, our Chair, Ms. Morrison.
We had a very productive meeting on October 29th, and I hope all of you received. Ms. Martin shared the minutes, and hopefully it will give us more benefits on... with legislative season coming up on what our specific priorities will be. So we'll have another meeting in December, I believe, and so that'll be forthcoming.
And Mr. Carney, the Foundation.
Yeah, the spirit of Thanksgiving, the Education Foundation wanted to express appreciation to two groups of people specifically. So first of all, the Umbel ISD employees who have participated in the employee campaign. So it's not time for the full release of the report of how that's gone so far, but just wanted to express appreciation that we appreciate you guys, everything that you do for our students every day and choosing to be a foundation donor. Also, we wanted to express appreciation to the participants of the golf tournament. So as my colleagues have mentioned, it was wildly successful, even though the weather wasn't all that cooperative. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, but it was a very, very successful year for the golf tournament. We appreciate everyone's support. And for a full list of the sponsors who supported the event, go to the Foundation's website at umbelisdfoundation.org.
Mr. President, I might add...
Yes.
That you and I weathered the storm all day at the golf tournament.
Yes, we did.
And Mr. Lopez played four holes and went home.
I saw him.
No, that's not true.[1531.15][1531.15](LAUGHING). Played nine holes, and then I stuck around an eight, and then went home. So that's...[1537.26][1537.26](LAUGHING).
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, good. We'll move on into items from closed session. I would ask if the parliamentarian would help me here.
My computer's really slow tonight.
They're all slow.
But I have to like...
Oh, so...[1565.33][1565.33](LAUGHING). So in other words, be myself and slow down?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I won't take no competition tonight.
No competition tonight, okay.
Ready?
Yeah, we're... Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I move that the Board approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, and second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions? We got a hand up already, all in favor?
He's voting.
He's voting already, all in favor.
I don't think it's working.
It's not working, just go ahead and just write it down.
This is what happens.
Okay.
If you're old school, you have to work it.
That's all you needed was the math.
All opposed by the same, okay. Motion carries, okay. Okay.
I move to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
All right. So move. We got the motion and the second, all in favor. Let it be known, right hand. All opposed by the same? Okay. She carries. All right. Now, Ms. Dixon, I would ask that you would help me with the consent agenda item. Mark it down for me, and we will start on 5A, the approval of minutes for Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. That is a consent. Approval of the minutes for Thursday, October 18th, 2018. That is consent. Item C, goods, professional service, non-construction service exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or 25 individually. That is consent. 5D, budgetary transfer and amendments and resolutions for commitments of fund balance. Consent. E, settlement and release with North or N Capital LLC and NWN Corporation. Consent. 5F, program management services, CBRE, Yuri.
Full.
Okay, that's an individual. Item G, consideration of engineering consulting services. That is a consent. H, approval of the selection of additional education consultants. That is consent. I, policy revision, this is the final action. Consent. J, amendments to the Board operating procedures. Consent. And if you could, read back the consent agenda items for me, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the following items by consent. 5A through E, 5G through J.
Okay. All have heard the motion. Right, 10 second, all in favor. Opposed by the same? Motion carries. Okay. And then we go back to F. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. F and have a motion.
So move.
A second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Need a second. Okay, now, Ms. Dixon, I think you pull that.
Yes, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the program management firm that we're looking at. One thing that I think the Building and Planning Committee, and if I misspeak in any way, please speak up my... speak up my fellow committee members, but we're looking at a blended staff augmentation model. And that means having a program management firm come in, and one of the reasons that that's a good idea for us is to have immediate availability of experienced and skilled personnel. Also, for risk mitigation, which would include independent auditing, document controls, scheduling, and cost controls. And also, in that type of environment, if we bring in our own staff as well, the program management can staff up and down as needed. I don't know if there's any discussion needed with the Board, if there's anything that we need to, if you have any questions or other comments, but it's, yes, any clarification or any questions?
I was, I'm just gonna say.
Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
I'm fine with this compromise. You know, this is a compromised position. I think that we need to make sure that we have our own in-house folks to manage the bond projects going forward, but having the augmentation from an outside group such as CBRE Henry here, that, you know, we will have that oversight and kind of third-party review, which I think is helpful and useful. And it's 20% of the amount of what we were talking about before, so I approve, I think that's also important. So I'm fine with this.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Sitten.
Well, I'm one of those that I wanted to go 100% with the program management platform because of what they bring to the table from a transparency standpoint, efficiency standpoint, expertise standpoint. But I do agree that this is a workable compromise. Having them in on the front end, looking at our processes, our policies, procedures, helping us move forward in a transparent manner, a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, you know, as far as, you know, do we move this school up, move that school up? It gives us another set of eyes looking over our finances, looking over our bond program, looking over the past reports, looking over needs and so forth. And at the end of this contract, if we're not, if we don't feel like we are where we need to be in-house, then there's that potential that we could bring them back and extend that contract at some point in time. Don't know what that would look like, but I think the way this agenda is written, it gives us that added flexibility to make sure that the taxpayers know that we're taking this $575 million bond referendum seriously, serious enough to go out and look at an experienced firm that has done this type of program in the past. So I'm on board with the compromised augmentation program.
Yes.
I'm just sad, I really think it's important, and this is not the end of our growth by any means. We have natural disasters. I think it's really important to build our capacity for how we manage our projects. So I think this is important to enhance that guidance as we build that capacity is ideal. So I appreciate the recommendation.
And my only final comment is that, you know, I was also 100% program management, but I also think it's a fair compromise, and it does allow some flexibility as we move forward. That's it.
And I guess I'll just kind of end it. I really want to just kind of give kudos to you, Dr. Fagan, and your staff for really looking at all the options out there. And as we move forward, as you say, the growth is going to continue. But as we actually build, as we already have great employees, we have great teachers, as we build a great staff over in support services, I think that this is going to be a definite win. And so, yeah, I'm wholeheartedly in for it. I work with a lot of program managers, but I think the direction that we're headed in is going to be one that is going to be a win-win for UMBL ISD. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed by the same? All right, motion carries. What is next on here? The CAFER. Okay, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Chair.
Is this an action item?
It is, yes, sir.
Yes.
Want to see the presentation first, then have a motion? Or you just want to go ahead and motion it?
We have to have a motion.
Okay, let's have a motion.
We have to have a motion.
Okay, so we have an action item, we have a motion on the, we do have a motion yet.
I'll move.
Got one, second? All right, got seconds. Mr. Sitten, second. All in favor?
We're not going to vote.
Well, you're gonna vote, you're gonna wait till it, huh? So now we come, now we come with a discussion. Now, and if you will, I believe you were there, but just go ahead and reintroduce yourself and everybody, and we'll let you just go ahead and take it.
President Cunningham, members of the Board, Dr. Fagan, good evening. My name is Lupe Garcia. I'm the audit partner on the district's engagement. Also here tonight is Patrick Simmons. He's the manager on the engagement. Wave, Patrick, thank you. I've prepared a brief presentation to take you through the audit process, our opinion on the financial statements, briefly touch on some highlights of the financial activity of the district, and then open it up for any questions. These first several slides consist of required communications we have to make to you. This first one is our responsibility in this process to issue an opinion on the financial statements. We decide the nature, timing, and extent of the procedures that need to be performed, and that's all based on our understanding of the district's internal controls, procedures, and policies in place. We did review the district's accounting policies, and they are in line with industry standards. There was one new implementation that the district performed this year, GASB statement number 75. That's the rulemaking body that the district has to follow for financial reporting. GASB statement number 75 has to do with TRS care, other post-employment benefits, this is retiree healthcare. So you may remember in fiscal year 2015, the district implemented GASB statement number 68 that had to do with the pension liability. Now, this is the retiree healthcare portion or the OPEB liability that the district had to record on its financial statements for the first time. The financial statements do include estimates. Some of the more significant estimates are listed on this slide. We reviewed management's basis for all these estimates, and they are reasonable and in line with industry standards as far as how they were recorded and estimated. I'm happy to report, we didn't encounter any difficulties in performing and completing the audit. We did have the district's full cooperation throughout the entire process. It takes several, several months. As you know, fiscal year 2018 was not a usual year for the district, so management kept us in the loop. The lines of communication were open at all times, and because they understand how important the financial statements are to the district, we were always kept abreast of the challenges that the district was facing as it went through this fiscal year. We did not identify any material misstatements that management had to post in order for these financial statements to be prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We didn't have any disagreements with management when it came to any accounting principles or accounting estimates. We do obtain representations from management at the end of the audit, just so that we know that the district has been a full and open book with us, and they've disclosed and made available to us all information that we've requested. As far as we're aware, the district's not consulting with any other accountants in regards to the opinion on the financial statements, accounting estimates, or any accounting principles. During the year, we answer questions, we provide guidance, but at no time do we feel we need to answer a certain way or have, take a certain position in order to be retained as the district's external auditors. Now, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, there's only a few pages in this report that actually come from us. Beginning on page 17 is our opinion on the financial statements. There was a speaker earlier that referred to this opinion. This contains our unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion on the financial statements. So the users of the financial statements, yourselves, the community, credit rating agencies, investors that buy the district bonds, they're waiting for this report to be issued because they want to see that, one, our report includes an unmodified opinion, and, two, they want to see how the district ended the fiscal year. We did include a paragraph in this opinion just emphasizing the fact that the district did implement this new accounting standard because it did impact the district in a significant way. A second report, we issue, we report if we found any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting, or if we identified any non-compliance that's material to the financial statement. So I'm happy to report that we didn't identify anything like that, so that's a clean report as well. The district does also go through a federal single audit because it does receive and expend awards from federal agencies, so we did not find any question cost or any non-compliance there either. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over those compliance requirements that are applicable to those federal programs. This slide is the district's statement of net position. This particular statement is prepared on the same basis of accounting, just like the private sector or corporate America. This reports all the assets of the district, all the liabilities of the district. So total assets were $975 million. The largest portion of that balance is going to be the district's capital assets, land, buildings, vehicles, and equipment of $654 million. You have total liabilities of $922 million. $636 million of that are the district's general obligation bonds and premiums on those bonds. You see, I break out those two lines, the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, which is due for this year. The net pension liability is $74.4 million. That's a decrease from the prior year. You can see last year, last fiscal year was $83.8 million. That net OPEB liability is a lot larger than the pension liability because we're talking about healthcare, and that's so much more expensive. That's $128.4 million as of June 30th, 2018. This is a financial reporting implementation only. This does not change the way the district funds TRS. Any decisions that are going to impact this liability are made at the state level. Who's going to contribute? The state, the district, the employees, the retirees, or are there going to be changes to benefits in the future that are going to control this liability from increasing any further? That's yet to, you know, that's to be determined. So we'll see where we are a year from now, five years from now, to see how this liability changes over time. This statement is your fund financial statements. This is what you're used to seeing in your monthly financial reports. The general fund is the district's main operating account. Fund balance in this fund did grow by $12.1 million. The reason for the growth in the fund balance here was because the district was the recipient, was able to reclassify some Harvey-related expenditures to a capital projects fund to try to minimize the effect on the general fund. We have the debt service fund that accumulates funds for the service of principal and interest on the district's long-term debt. Fund balance in that fund was $49.3 million. You have to remember, there's a debt service payment that comes due 45 days after June 30, so the debt service fund needs to have these funds there to make that debt service payment. You have your capital projects fund that has an ending fund balance of $3.1 million. All the Harvey-related expenditures were recorded in a capital projects fund. We have the special revenue fund, which are the district's federal, state, and local grants, fund balance of a little over $9 million. The bulk of that fund balance is related to your child nutrition program and your activity funds. What gets a lot of attention in the general fund is your unassigned fund balance. That's the portion of fund balance that's available for spending at the district's discretion. Unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2018 equated to about 90 days of operating expenditures. The TEA has a first rating indicator that looks at how much operating cash you have on hand, and so you'll score maximum points if you're at 90 days, and the district is at 90 days as of June 30, 2018. This isn't a savings account, this is the district's working capital. This is what the district uses to make payroll and pay vendors for contracted services, goods, supplies, et cetera. So that's the conclusion of my prepared remarks. So if there are any questions about the report, the audit process, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. So, yeah, just to finish that up, no findings. I mean, you know, again, as I said earlier when we were talking about the rebuilding of Kingwood High School and so forth, because of the numbers you just saw, we were able to continue moving forward without ever missing a beat, without ever affecting kids' learning programs, et cetera. And that's a tribute to Mike Seal and his team and his predecessor as well. It's been a longstanding tradition of good fiscal management in UMBL ISD, and that has proven that it's continuing to move forward. So thank you again, Mike, for you and your team and the work you've done, and thank you to Whitley Penn for doing a good job for us again on the audit side.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sitten. All right. Seeing none. We already had a motion, so all those in favor, right hand? Opposed by the same? All right, that motion carries. Moving on to information items. The report on the limited English proficiency, financial service report, and policy revisions. Information items, is any questions? Sure, Dr. Fagan would.
He's fascinated.
Sure, Dr. Fagan would be happy to address her or staff. Okay, how about consideration of topics for future board business?
Yes, Mr. President. I recently inquired with General Counsel about our policy on crowdfunding, and she reported that back along with administrative procedures. And although I've seen that, you guys haven't, so I feel it's necessary to bring that to the Board for a review.
Okay, okay.
What was that?
Crowdfunding.
Crowdfunding. Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and it is. Stay warm.